Good evening and welcome to our City Council meeting for September 26. Would you please join us in pledging allegiance to our country? Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember McCoy.
Present.
Councilmember Fox.
Here.
And Mayor Bill DeLaPeña.
Present. Thank you. We don't have any requests for a continuance, and we don't have any special presentations tonight. However, we would like to officially welcome Boy Scout Troop Number 761 in the audience tonight. Welcome.[104.68][104.68](APPLAUSE). I hope this will be a somewhat interesting lesson for you to earn your badge. We will make it, we will try to make it as entertaining as possible. I rely for that. I usually rely on Councilmember Rob McCoy, Andy Fox, those two. Maybe you two. All right.[128.56][128.56](LAUGHING). All right, so we will have public comments.
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for City Council and the official records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Two individuals have presented cards in pursuant to council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes, and the yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. We do have only two speakers. First one, Karen Gorbak, followed by Nick Kidway.
Good evening, Mayor Bill DeLaPeña, council members. My name is Karen Gorbak, and I'd like to introduce myself as the newly-elected Chair of the Thousand Oaks Council on Aging, and I'd also like to use this opportunity this evening to acknowledge and thank the other professionals who will be serving with me on the council this year. Loretta Allen, our newly-elected Vice Chair, is a retired RN manager. She helped install the electronic health record software in numerous hospitals and clinics throughout the United States and Canada. Commissioner Allen keeps us abreast of health-related issues related to seniors, and will also serve as our social media chair. Donna Mortimer is our Program Chair. She retired from Amgen in 2015 and serves as a docent at the Reagan Presidential Library. She worked all summer to find speakers for our televised monthly meetings this year. The October 4th Speaker is Dr. Gregory Tajayen, orthopedic surgeon at Los Real Base Hospital, who will talk to us about joint replacement surgery. Immediate Past Chair Nick Fatheringham will report to us on issues related to caregiving. Nick is a husband, grandfather, father, scientist, author, and 32-year resident of Thousand Oaks. He also serves on the VC AAA Advisory Committee and will talk to us this year about issues on caregiving. Terry Maria has been a leader in the field of telecommunications for 30 years and a resident of the Conejo Valley for 21 years. Commissioner Maria will report on local social services and also chair our Senior of the Year Awards Banquet. Tony Git is a retired program manager from the aerospace industry and also a board member of the CVUSD Measure Eye Bond Oversight Committee. In addition, he serves on the Board of Directors of the Conejo Valley Village as its treasurer. Commissioner Git will be reporting this year on issues related to safety and emergency preparedness, and he will also work on the Conejo Connections database. Ron Hagie is a retired teacher. He's been married to Dorothy for 57 years, and they celebrate 11 beautiful grandchildren. Commissioner Hagie will be a representative, along with me, on the VC AAA. He will also be our outreach chair and report on issues related to fraud. One of our newly-appointed commissioners is Kenneth Gardner, who's the Chair of the Theater and Dance Department at CLU. Commissioner Gardner will be serving as our Education Chair, reporting on educational opportunities of interest to seniors. Another new commissioner is John Posta. Commissioner Posta practiced patent law in Los Angeles for more than 40 years. Along with the COA, he serves as a commissioner on the Global Center Commission. Commissioner Posta will report on local discount programs for seniors and coordinate monthly speakers from the Global Center and the Conejo Senior Volunteer Program. So that's it. That's all nine of us. And we'll be on your agenda for the October 24th meeting, when we are going to recommend that Thousand Oaks apply for the designation as an age-friendly livable community through the California State AARP. And I'll see you then, and thank you for your time.
Well, thank you so much for introducing your commission. I think this is the first time that the Chair has done that for the Council on Aging. I think it's a wonderful idea. Thank you very much for doing that. Appreciate it. Nick Kidway.
I begin by reminding you about our Creator, who's most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Igbalkidway. I'm a resident of Newberry Park since '79, '77, and Director Concerned Citizens of Thousand I guess I have begun to believe in good karma. I was here at the last meeting, and I don't have a bag easily available, so I put my laptop in the three-ring binder. And I didn't look for it for three, four, five days, and then I couldn't find it. So I realized it was lost, so I called the city clerk's office, and lo and behold, a good Samaritan returned it. And so whoever it was, I thank them and staff for helping me get it back. I want to talk about an unfinished business that has been in the city for a long time. In '98, the city enacted an un-American sign ordinance. One aspect of this un-American nature is that you cannot even have two signs of a political candidate on your front lawn unless you have a huge lawn. And who is going to go and measure? I am. I have to find out the violations, because the sign ordinance doesn't belong. It's the only one, and none of the other cities in the county or LA County even have it, that I know of. I was told over a year ago that because of the Supreme Court ruling on signs, signs like that, as well as other business signs, will be removed. And it's been over a year. The signs that affected the businesses were right away removed. But then, like it happens so many times with legislation or with bodies like this, no one followed up. And we have another election coming up next year, and that ordinance, which Kim Jong Un loves, because it puts our country in a bad light, just like the minutes that you have. Because for 25 years, minutes give you a synopsis as to what was said, and now it's just names. And there are so few people coming into the meetings that it doesn't take that long. In the '90s, when, just like has happened recently here, that meetings are running back-to-back for a month, et cetera, there are hardly anyone coming. Why don't you do the right thing and don't look at the person who's proposing it? If I know some of you don't like me, that's all right. I can live with that.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
No items for specific follow-up, only that the city attorney may want to address the signs issue.
Yeah, I was just letting you know. The sign ordinance regarding temporary signs, which includes political signs, was actually revised last year. So that part is done. With respect to the rest of the signs, those are your permanent signs, the city staff is still looking at that. But the temporary sign provisions were revised already, either early this year or late last year. I can't remember precisely.
Thank you. And with that, we can move to the consent calendar. Are there any questions regarding the consent calendar? None? Mr. Price.
I would move consent calendar.
That sounds good to me. We have no speakers, so let's vote.
That motion carries 5-0, and your ordinance title is an ordinance adding Section 8-1.26 to the municipal code regarding electric vehicle charging stations, MCA 2017-70306, ordinance number 1632NS.
Thank you. We now move to our public hearing of wastewater and water rates. It's item number 8A, and this particular hearing will have to be opened by our city clerk.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A regarding wastewater and water rates. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing. All documents for the City Council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Three individuals have presented speaker cards, and pursuant to council standards, each speaker will have five minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Our Public Works Director, Mr. Jay Spurgeon, will present the report, along with staff.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This is our public hearing for water and wastewater rates for the next two years. Joining me on the dais tonight is Nancy Arietta. She's an associate analyst in our department, and Nancy has helped the team through this process and especially on the utility assistance program. And also Kevin Kostick, who's with Raftellus Financial Consultants, who developed our water and wastewater rate model. So here's the summary of what we're looking at. For wastewater, a 1% per year increase for the next two years. Water likewise is 1% per year increase for the next two years for our internal needs, adding to that 3% per year for passing-through imported water rate increases. We had the financial plans approved back in July. We do have our public hearing tonight, and then these new rates and the assistance program would go into effect in January 2018. Looking back on wastewater, there were a number of years when wastewater rates were not adjusted at all, as shown here. Then we had a couple of years of 4% and 5%, and we dropped down to about 1% per year, and that's what we anticipate for the foreseeable future in terms of wastewater adjustments. Water has been more volatile, because these have followed the increases in imported water rates. So a number of years were pretty significant. These have stabilized more recently, and looking forward, we are also anticipating only a total of 4% per year increases, which includes that 3% pass-through. Imported water will continue to rise, as these are the projections that our wholesale purveyor, CaliGas Municipal Water District, has given us, and you can see they're just under 5% per year. So moving to more details on our wastewater rates, the 1% increase is really driven by maintaining and managing our assets. Wastewater has significant assets. You see well over $800 million of current value, and to maintain those appropriately, we need about $5 million per year revenue. The financial plan prepared by Raftellus includes our expected revenues and expenses, as well as reserve funding targets. And so the need for an increase of 1% is reflected in the plan of the difference between current revenues and proposed revenues needed to meet our targets. And so here's what we propose to do. Increase wastewater each year about 30 cents per month per residential customer. That's again a 1% increase. Our monthly wastewater rates compare very favorably to our neighbors in the region. We are the second lowest of anybody nearby, as you see here. There are some significantly higher, some agencies that are in our county area. We also are proposing to increase the wastewater connection fee. This is what we charge new development. This is for a single-family residential to connect to our wastewater. This is a buy-in charge. We're proposing an increase of 4.3%, which is the change in our industry index that this fee is connected with. The connection fees also compare favorably. We're about the middle of the pack, a little bit higher. I don't think that's a bad thing, actually, because it does provide us with the revenue we need to continue to improve and maintain our system. So for water, first thing I wanted to mention is that there's a significant difference in how we set our rates here in the city as compared to our private water company neighbors. City is governed by Proposition 218, which is a constitutional amendment. It requires that we closely link proposed rates to actual costs of service. There is obviously a public hearing, and ultimately, the City Council approves these rates. There is a ballot protest process, and we'll talk a little bit more about that at the end. And we do our rates every two years. The private companies, California American Water and California Water Service Company, they have a process that goes every three years. It's a general rate case that's heard by the California Public Utility Commission. They are not subject to Prop 218. They do have some level of public participation, but ultimately, their rates are determined and approved by an appointed board in San Francisco. So very different processes. Again, as with wastewater, our water enterprise is a significant asset that we do maintain, almost half a billion dollars. We require about $6 million per year of funding here, and again, this is the majority of our 1% increase for our internal needs in the water. The water financial plan also confirms the need for the proposed increases, again, to hit our funding targets. Water rates are composed of two different pieces. There's a base rate that is charged every month, whether you use any water or not, and that is based on the size of meter. The 5/8 inch meter size is predominant for our residential customers, and so that base charge is proposed to be increased by 26 cents a month. That's a 1% increase. The second component is quantity, and this is how much you get charged by, based on what you use. And it's broken down between the delivery or what the city needs to pay for all of our needs, and then there's the pass-through that's shown for the two years. Ultimately, the city's needs are only a 5 cent per unit of water increase, but these are the proposed quantity rates. But in all that, when you put it all together, this is really the important chart, because this compares what currently different users or customers that use different amounts of water pay currently and what they would pay under the proposed rates for the first year. And you can see that our lower water users, it's about the lowest 10% of our users, would see about a 256 increase per month, 3.6%. Our average user at 18, 100 cubic feet, $4.4 per month, and a little over 4% increase. And then the top 10%, it's about $12 a month increase and 4.4% increase. So consistent, closely consistent in terms of the amount of water you use, the increases certainly close to one another. Taking that average 18 HCF per month and comparing it with other agencies, you can see that we are, again, we're not the top, certainly not the bottom. The lower cost agencies here typically all have local supplies, groundwater, which are much less expensive than imported water. You can also see that between our two neighboring private companies, California Water Service and Cal American, the city's about in the middle, but we're all about the same cost, certainly closely aligned there. Likewise, water connection fee, it's time to adjust that, again, by that 4.3% index, and our water connection fees compare with our neighbors, as shown here. We're second to the top. Again, this is a buy-in fee. new for this round is a utility assistance program. So we're really very pleased to be able to propose this. This is something we've not done ever, and I think this is a great program that'll assist our lower-income customers. We're proposing about $100,000 budget for each water and wastewater enterprises. This would be funded with late fees and non-payment fees, so it's not directly a surcharge on the rates, which actually we're not allowed to do under Prop 218. The eligibility for this program, we would use the CARE program that Edison and the gas company have in place. So if you're a CARE, if you're in the CARE program already, then you're eligible for ours. We do need to limit the participation, so 1,600 customers in wastewater, and the assistance would be a credit of $5 a month. Water, 800 customers, $10 a month credit. These are what we would like to start with and see how the program progresses going And that wraps it up. Our recommendations are in the staff report. We did mail out 55,000 notices in compliance with Prop 218. That's to all of our water and wastewater customers. That's, we see a lot of envelopes and stamps, but we have received, as of the beginning of the meeting, 13 protests for water and 16 protests in wastewater. Those are far below the needed threshold for a 50% protest of 8,000 and 19,000 for water and wastewater, respectively. So we're happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you very much. Before I open it up for questions, I just wanted to say thank you so much for implementing the utility assistance program, which I believe we discussed here on the dais about 18 months ago, perhaps two years ago, not quite certain, and lo and behold, here it is. Great. It's a pilot program of sorts, so we will see how it goes. Thank you for doing that. Mr. McCoy. Okay. I'm seeing things, then. There are no questions from council members, but also I wanted to ask about the water rates table that you mentioned in your slide, comparing us to CalAM and California Water Company. The rates that we're comparing ourselves to, is it the current CalAM rates, because we talked about CalAMs just last week? Is that with the current rate they have?
Yes, Madam Mayor, it is. It's as of last month.
If they were to go, if the CPUC were to approve their rate increase, where would they be in the table and on this chart?
They'd be 130-some dollars.
And at the very top?
Based on their original proposal.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot. All right. We do have speakers. Well, Colleen Bush was on the list for public speaker. Are you still speaking? Yes, very good. Go ahead. Followed by Nick Kidway. Yes, you're first.
I'm a software firm, and they allow me to dress however we want. My name is Colleen Bush, and I've been a resident of TO for 35 years. I am opposing the water rate hike. Those of us who live in the oldest neighborhoods of Thousand Oaks have large lots to keep up, anywhere from a quarter acre to almost an entire acre of land. We all recognize that water is a precious resource and are conserving the best we can. Those that can afford to do so are removing any large areas of lawn and replacing with drought-tolerant plants. Others are just letting their property die. I have a picture of my neighbor's house that I would like to share with you, where their front and backyard is totally dead. We are responsible citizens, and we want to keep our neighborhoods as attractive as we can out of pride for our property and resale value. However, the tiered rate system and the water rate hikes are making our desire to maintain the character of our town impossible. We want to maintain the rural character of our beautiful old neighborhoods, yet the city has penalized our efforts unfairly by setting up a tiered rate cost system with continual water rate hikes. This means that when we use more water than, say, the average house on a small lot or the average condo or apartment, we have to pay a higher price for water. We are also seeing that more single-family homes have residents now with multiple families, thus requiring more water usage per residence. We maintain that this is fundamentally unfair. This is like making a family pay a higher price for a second loaf of bread after they have bought the first loaf. Every loaf of bread, in our case, every unit of water should cost the same. We consider the city's pricing system not only unfair to us, but unfair in principle. Every unit of water should cost the same. Two years ago, a California appeals court declared the city of San Juan Capistrano tiered water rate system illegal. In that ruling, they also indicated that the rates must comply with Proposition 218, a 1996 voter-approved law that requires government fees to be set in accordance with service costs and how much water actually costs. Many of us have paid thousands of dollars to have our lots landscaped professionally. Why should we have to tear out our trees and plants that we once paid dearly for when rates were more reasonable? Some individuals are just letting their property die and not replacing anything because they can't afford it. Like your business owners in Thousand Oaks, do you want them to stop watering their property? This hurts our entire community. We call on the City Council not to discriminate against those of us with large lots or both large families. We understand how precious water is, but you should not make it impossible for us to maintain our property. The drought is over, and we call on you to eliminate the tiered rate system and stop the hikes to establish fairness for all. This is a picture. I don't know if you can see it, but it's my next-door neighbor's house, and it's completely dead.
If you can, we can protect that.
Sure. It's very embarrassing living next door to them, but I totally understand. They don't have the money to replace their landscaping. Just don't know what to say. You see this all over Thousand Oaks now. It's dead. And we once had a real pride, when I first moved here, to keeping our city attractive, and now it looks terrible. I don't know what to say. I don't know what to say. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. Before we call our next speaker, Nick Kidway, I'd like to say that the public, if there's anyone in the public who has remaining written protests, you may submit them to the city clerk right now. Okay, Mr. Kidway.
Nick Egbalkidway, resident of River Park since '79. I just want to make one point and one point only, which many people may not find useful. But in '98, we had a council member that scared the living daylights out of people here, that the city has a plan to raise the water rate so high that seniors will be out in the street, et cetera. And I've been waiting all these years for that hike to happen. And it was said, in a recall attempt of hers, that this is a backdoor effort to close the doors and not have any development. I know it's kind of late, but we should hold our council and other elected people accountable for what they say. And when they say something good, praise them, and if they say something that turns out to be a complete farce and a political game ship, then we should say it like it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ann Marie, followed by Suzanne Duckett.
Hi, my name is Ann Marie. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks here. Thank you all for all of your efforts that you put into the City of Thousand Oaks. We all love our city. I'd like to start by saying that we did receive the notice that was dated July 2017. However, we received it on August 16th, which was just under the 45 days that we should have been receiving it. When I went online to find the entirety of the proposals to both the wastewater and the water, it was not there. I requested it multiple times. I think I even called some of you individuals to help me find it. Where is it? I finally spoke with Nancy Arietta, and thank you. I appreciate that. She said, "You're right, it's not there." We worked hard to get it up, and apparently, the office manager didn't do her job by putting it up. But thank you for getting it to me. I appreciate it. My question was, multiple times, did the increase have anything to do with increases to benefits, salaries, and retirements to city employees, in particular, your department? And I was told a number of times, they didn't know. They weren't sure, but that I could look at the proposal, but the proposal was not there for me to look at. I found it interesting that they didn't know if it had anything to do with that. This is their income. I was told to call human resources. I was told to call the financial department. And forgive me, I'm very nervous. This is not my forte. I'm a merchandiser and party planner, so I apologize. I'm very nervous. But I found it frustrating, because I felt like the salaries of these employees are already way above the average. And I'm thinking, if it has anything to do with that, it's not right. It feels corrupt. So, I did. I ended up finding it. And it's on page, it's Article 331, Inflation. And it states that the benefits and salaries are going to go up anywhere between 2% and 4% from now all the way to 2022, which is exactly what the water rate increase was, which was not mentioned in your introduction tonight, and I wish that it was. The average monthly income of an executive manager in the city is $10,000 per month. $10,000 per month. The benefits alone that they receive with vacation pay, retirement pay, gas pay, it's For them to want to increase our water rate because they want raises, I just disagree with. If in my job, I failed to post something that the taxpayer should be seeing, my job would be on the line, but not if you're a city worker, because there's no checks and balances, no apology, no accountability. And it's frustrating. It's frustrating for me. I went door-to-door last night with my husband and had people sign this. It sounds like it's going to happen anyway, that it's going to go through. As he said, it's going to go into effect because there wasn't enough people to stand up. But you know what? We're all working full-time jobs. Every person that we went to, door-to-door, said, "Thank you for doing this. We just don't have time. We're taking care of our kids and going to work and trying, and what are we supposed to do? It's like they're just going to do it to us anyway." I want you to hear, this is the people that you're serving. Your mission statement, and I apologize, I can't find it right now, but the mission statement basically says, "To take care of the people of Thousand Oaks in the best way possible." This does not feel like we're being taken care of. Not everyone can work for the city and make the amount of money that city workers make. Somebody's got to bag the groceries. Somebody's got to work at the retail stores. And it's really, really frustrating. If anybody in this room would like to see in print what the city workers are making, I'd love to share it with them. Thank you.
Thank you. We will address all of your concerns after the last speaker, Suzanne Duckett.
Good evening, Suzanne Duckett, Thousand Oaks. If this is American water, American California water, I think it's owned by the Germans, as I recall. It's not owned by the Germans? I think it is. It's not? It was at one time, I believe. Okay, it was at one time, so I stand corrected. Why should we pay more? Why should I pay more when I'm using a lot less water? That's the question that I want to ask you. If this is about wastewater, oh, going back to the American water. If, in fact, this is increased, I want to guarantee that there will be only 24-hour interruption after the earthquake. I want no interruption, but I will stand for 24 hours only. One day of a major earthquake, which is coming. And the same with the wastewater, actually. I only want 24 hours. I will go along with 24 hours of interruption. So, when I call, I want you to come immediately to fix what's wrong. But I want you to fix it for the entire city, in both departments, immediately, guaranteed, here tonight, guaranteed. Thank you.
This was our last speaker. I'm now going back to staff to have you address some of the comments and feedback or input from the public.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In 2010, our rates, our tiered rates, were very different than they are today, and I have a kind of a backup slide here that you can take a look at. At that time, there were residents who did have, who were from the older part of town, the Caneo Oaks area, on large lots, that felt that our tiered rate structure needed to be reviewed. And ultimately, a committee was put in place, and we met and talked to them over a period of many months and many meetings. Ultimately, they came back with a proposal to eliminate tiered rates and go back to a flat rates structure, which we had prior to about 2008. The council considered that, as well as the needs and the benefits of a tiered rate structure, and significantly changed that structure, as you can see here, to be very, very flat. And so, this is probably the flattest tiered rate structure that I've ever seen. Any water purveyor who has a tiered rate structure, typically, the differences between the prices at tier, between the tiers are more like what we used to be at, in the 20s and even 30%. So, we went to a 7.5% differential. I just share that because this is something that has been a concern from our residents, especially those on larger lots, for some time. And I think that we had thoroughly evaluated the alternatives and presented those, and we ended up where we are today. And I believe that this is a pretty fair tiered rate structure, and I wouldn't recommend changing that at this time.
Mr. Spurgeon, could you hang on just one second? Our city attorney would like to weigh in.
I just want to elaborate a little bit about the tiered rate structure. One of the speakers talked about the San Juan Capistrano case. And in the San Juan Capistrano case, the court did strike down a tiered rate structure that was adopted by the city itself. The Supreme Court did not strike down tiered rates in and of itself. The reason why the Supreme Court struck down the tiered rates in San Juan Capistrano is because the city was not able to prove that the tiered structure that they created only charged the actual cost. You heard from our public works director, the difference between a public water utility, such as the City of Thousand Oaks, versus a private water utility. We are subject to Proposition 218, and we can only charge for actual costs. We cannot charge you an amount that's going to help pay for this person's water services. We can only charge you the actual cost. So, if we're going to create a tiered rate structure, we have to be able to kind of show our math, to show that the basis for the different tiers are based on the actual costs. We did do that study, and that was what was presented to the city in July. We have our consultant here who prepared the study, who can even further elaborate on it if any council members have any questions. In this case, though, as Mr. Spurgeon indicated, the rate structure itself, the tiered rate structure, has been flattened out, but the report provides the backup, the background for what the actual costs are for each of those tiered rates. Again, in this case, when the city charges for water or wastewater, we are limited to only charging for the actual costs to provide the service. We cannot charge any more than what we actually incur, what is actually incurred. We cannot make a profit off of it, and we cannot guess as to how much it costs. I don't know if Mr. Kostick has any additional comments he wants to make with respect to the study that he did.
Good evening. So, in 2015, we revised the previous cost-of-service study in light of the San Juan Capistrano ruling, and kind of more stringency around water rates in general. We actually were the consultants who fixed the San Juan Capistrano rates. And what I'll add is that, as the city attorney mentioned, it wasn't about the rate structure itself, it was about the preparation of the tiers, the pricing, the costs that were included or not included to certain classes of customers. And so, what we have to demonstrate is that the cost for each tier is not subsidizing another user, another class of user, and that those costs are actually incurred.
Thank you. Mr. Spurgeon?
Yeah, I'd also want to comment, you know, one of the speakers mentioned how many residents are letting their yards go brown. They've stopped or cut back on water significantly. Many residents throughout the city have replaced their turf yards with much lower water-requiring plants, native, California natives and whatnot. The differential there is, there's a cost to do that, but certainly, going forward, there can be significant water savings, and it can be up to, you know, 50%. And that's something that I experienced at my own property, which is a bit larger than normal or than average, and I did replace my turf some time ago. There were rebates, there was a rebate program, which is no longer in effect, but there's still lots of good information about water conservation and outdoor watering and efficient planting and irrigation use on the bewaterwise.com website. So, we would certainly encourage folks to go look at that for additional information. Regarding the budget that supports these proposed rates, the majority of our water budget, our water budget's about $30 million a year, probably about 70% of that is purchased water, is buying imported water. It's already treated, it's already been harvested from this year, and obviously transported many, many hundreds of miles. That's our water supply, it's our sole water supply. As those costs go up, we really have little discretion other than to pass those costs through. The additional cost for city needs, there was a concern that perhaps salary and benefits was making up the bulk of that. And if you look at our water budget, salary and benefits, paying our own staffs, is about 10% of our total budget. And those include the inflationary numbers that the speaker had mentioned, and that's rolled into, that's really a fairly small part of the 1% per year increase. Other things are energy costs, we pump a lot of water, chemicals, materials, and of course, as I mentioned at the beginning, the needs for asset management of our assets, of replacing and repairing aging infrastructure. I don't think that anyone can guarantee any period of time for uninterrupted supply if there's a major earthquake, but I will tell you that after such an event, staff will be out immediately assessing and doing whatever we can to restore both water and wastewater services in the event of an earthquake. So, I think that's, those are my replies to the speaker. So, again, any questions, we'd be happy to.
Yeah, there are a couple of questions. Mr. McCoy?
Mr. Spurgeon, can you speak to the notification process that was brought up, please?
Sure. And that was unfortunate. We did mail out, as I mentioned, 55,000 notices to our water and wastewater customers. Those notices indicated that the water and wastewater financial plans were at a particular location on our website. They were on the website, they were not at that address. We did remedy that when we were notified, both by the speaker who came tonight, but we had also heard from a few other folks, and we did fix that as quickly as we could.
How many people were affected by that?
Well, once the information, once we made the information or put the plans where we indicated, then they're available to anybody who went there. So, I'm not sure how that affected. I mean, we heard from four or five people that they had looked and couldn't find it. So, that's the magnitude of folks that wanted to find it before we had corrected that.
Thank you.
Any other additional questions? And no additional comments either from staff, then? This is it? Okay. Okay. I will close the public hearing. So there's one last call for any written protests tonight. Once the public hearing is closed, we will no longer be able to receive any written protests. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. And will the city clerk please provide the results of the tabulation?
The total number of notices issued by the city on the proposed water rate increase was 16,500. Thirteen valid protests were received prior to tonight's public hearing. Forty-two protests received this evening pending verification for a total of 55 total protests that were received. Based on the results, there are insufficient protests received for a majority protest. The total number of notices issued by the city on the proposed wastewater rate increase was 38,000. Sixteen valid protests were received prior to tonight's public hearing. Forty-two protests were received this evening pending verification. Fifty-eight total protests were received. Based on the results, there are insufficient protests received for a majority protest.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is now the council's opportunity to discuss the proposal this evening. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When we do this every couple of years, certainly for the last decade or so, it's always a difficult process, particularly for those property owners that have large lots. And I'm one of them. And so I certainly see how the, the tiered rate system for some is hard to swallow, so to speak, because it, our water rates have gone up significantly. I think Mr. Spurgeon and our consultant and city staff have done his best job we can to answer the questions that residents have. It's important to recognize the city's water fund, the wastewater fund, has to remain solvent, has to have a certain amount of reserves in order for us to be financially responsible. We only raise the rates at a level that is necessary to continue the plant and the water service operations with the redundancy that's needed and, and I won't go into all the, the details of it. But it, it's not lost on the council that water rates are extremely high. If you were at last week's council meeting, we spent a significant amount of time educating the public on fighting the private water purveyors' requests to raise water rates significantly. If you're on city water, we do our level best to keep it reasonable. And as the chart showed, the water rates in Thousand Oaks are amongst the lowest, they're fairly competitive, the wastewater amongst the lowest, which is different than the new development. Many years ago, when council talked about doing the capital improvement plan for our wastewater treatment plant, we consciously added the brunt of that cost as much as it was legally possible on new development, on developers. Some would argue that that raises the cost of housing, which it does. But we did our level best to have the lowest possible rates for folks that already live here. And that's what we strive to do. Mr. Spurgeon, could you just put that graphic back up there on what our water rates are compared to other cities?
The public hearing is closed?
I don't.
I would have to open it back up.
I don't want it to open up, I just want the graphic up.
Oh, okay, thanks.
So while he's getting it up, this is what council looks at. We look at our water rates compared to other cities in the county. We try to be as competitive as possible. Now, it's important, our wastewater plant, you mean, some of you may care or you may not care, is recognized throughout the state as being state of the art for all the environmental programs that are, are there. So we're not just getting by, we're actually leading the way with environmental programs as it relates to our wastewater facility. So these, these are difficult, but they are necessary. Cities that don't take these steps end up having problems with their water system or their wastewater system. They're not pay-as-you-go and the next thing you know, they're not doing their required maintenance. And water and wastewater is, if not the most important infrastructure to a municipal body, I don't know what is. And so, certainly going to move for the recommendations one, two, three, and four, setting the wastewater and the water rates. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Price?
Yeah, thank you. Certainly nobody likes to raise any rates here. And the, as was explained, the majority of the rate increases being proposed tonight are the imported water fees. It's the three percent that it costs to get the water to your homes. One percent is going to cover the cost of actually delivering it to your home. And while I'm certainly not in favor, I wouldn't raise rates if it wasn't necessary, I do find myself in a position where I have to vote in favor of this. So just wanted to make that statement.
Okay, I don't have any additional council member requests to speak. So I would like to add that I do feel your frustration and the Speaker Anne Marie was very passionate. I appreciate that. As my colleagues already mentioned, the price of water is going up. Metropolitan Water District, Calle Yegas, they're all raising the prices. And the City of Thousand Oaks will still have one of, in the City of Thousand Oaks, the lowest water rates compared to Cal American Water, as well as California Water Company in the Westlake Village area, which is the highest. I wish the City of Thousand Oaks were the only purveyor in town. It would save me a ton of water. But it, unfortunately, we're not. And as a result, many of us in, in Thousand Oaks, we have to pay much higher rates than those who are in the City of Thousand Oaks district. And with that, Mr. Fox, would you like to make final comments?
No.
All right. Mr. McCoy, you say?
I just had one final comment. I, I don't feel as though the rate increase is inappropriate. However, I, I do struggle with the tier level pricing. And I just don't feel as though that's fair to property owners. So I'll be voting no.
Mrs., Madam Clerk, can you please prepare us for our vote? I, it didn't come up on my screen.
Do you want to, can you please give a voice vote and I'll go ahead and vote it for you?
Yes.
That motion passes 4-1 with Councilmember McCoy voting no. And we have two ordinance titles for you. An ordinance adjusting and setting rates, fees, and discharge limits of City, City Wastewater Division. And ordinance adjusting and setting rates and fees of City Water Division.
Thank you. The next report is a department report on the city's West Side Properties currently leased to the California Museum of Art, Thousand Oaks. And this presentation will be made by Mark Towne, our Community Development Director. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This item is both to receive a report on the West Side Properties as well as to consider an amendment to the lease with the California Museum of Art, Thousand Oaks, otherwise known as Sumato. So that is the purpose for tonight's report. In terms of a little bit of background, the West Side Properties are composed of five parcels on the west side of Dallas Drive, which is the, the street leading into the Civic Arts Plaza. It encompasses approximately three acres total. And in terms of background with regard to Sumato, the city entered into an exclusive negotiation agreement with Sumato back in 2014 to establish essentially the terms and conditions to potentially establish a, an art museum on the site. That ENA expires next month. And this aerial shows the properties that I just mentioned. So these are, again, this is Dallas Drive that I just spoke of and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And so, these are the properties, one, two, three, four, five, that you can see that are on the west side of Dallas Drive. This is the parking structure and some of the government offices here at the Civic This is an image showing the western portion of the parcels. And that is Thousand Oaks Boulevard in the background. And so, this vacant area wrapping around this building, which the city does not own, but city does own all this vacant land, as well as this strip up on the west side of this two-story building. This is the eastern portion of the properties that we are discussing tonight. Part of the properties leased off to various commercial businesses. This is a landscape maintenance company and there are various auto-related uses right there. And the Sumato building is right here behind these oak trees. This is a panoramic showing a composite view from Dallas Drive looking essentially northwest of the property. Further with regard to Sumato, in November of 2014, the city entered into a lease agreement with Sumato for one of the parcels, the, the one located adjacent to Dallas Drive closer to Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And that space, as you know, has been used by Sumato for office purposes and for an interim gallery and museum space. And rent was nominal during this period. And that, that three-year lease concludes concurrently with the ENA next month. And so, this image shows the, the subject property that was the focus of the lease agreement. And familiar view of the east side of the Sumato temporary location. Now, switching gears to the West Side Properties themselves, they were acquired by the redevelopment agency back in 2010 and 2011. As you know, the RDA was dissolved the following year in 2012 and all assets were transferred to what we know as the successor agency to the RDA. Part of what the successor agency did was prepare a long-range property management plan. And that was basically a, a program for use of properties, assets that were previously owned by the RDA. And that plan proposed that certain properties, including the subject, be retained by the city for future governmental and related uses. That proposal was sent to the California State Department of Finance, which agreed with the proposed transfer and, and that took place in 2014. Just a quick note with regard to how these properties interrelate with specific plans. They're within the Civic Arts Plaza specific plan, which includes the building that we're in tonight. The specific plan designates the property for a variety of potential uses, all related to sort of public or quasi-public uses, art galleries, museums, assembly spaces, libraries, that type of thing. And then, as, as I believe the council is, is aware, is that the property surrounding this area is part of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard's specific plan. So now, we switch topics again to the downtown master plan, which is relevant to the discussion. You, as city council, has been working to develop a plan for this downtown core. And that has really picked up speed this year in particular. As you recall in January 25, end of January, we talked about guiding principles for that downtown plan. A downtown revitalization ad hoc committee was formed the following month, composed of Mayor Protam, Fox, and Councilmember Adam. And then, in late August, a consultant team, it's, we call it Remy and Associates because it's actually a team of four different consultants, was hired to actually prepare a master plan for this downtown core. And when I say downtown core, it's the area along Thousand Oaks Boulevard between Erbs Road and Caneo School Road. I'll show you an image in just a moment. And I mention all of this because the West Side Properties are really a key, or occupy a key location within that master plan study area. So this is an, an oblique aerial of the subject area. Really, it encompasses almost all of the study area. So you're looking essentially west. And this is Thousand Oaks Boulevard, of course. This is the 101 freeway and Civic Arts Plaza, of course, is here. Erbs Road is right here. And then, Caneo School Road is just out of the picture to the, to the bottom of the image. And the subject area that we're talking about right now is this area basically right here. So as you can see, when we speak of a master plan for this downtown core between Erbs Road and Caneo School Road, much of this area is developed or is proposed for development. The previous Lupe's Mexican Restaurant, which is right in here, as you know, is currently under construction right now. So in terms of undeveloped and underdeveloped properties, this area is really key to this area. So what will the master plan tell us? It will recommend a, a mix, a pattern of land uses to hopefully achieve these pedestrian economic goals that we've been talking about for so long. It will recommend specific uses at specific locations, at specific densities. And the consultant, when they first came on board and we took a walk-in tour on the downtown, they immediately recognized the, the importance of that area to the future of the downtown core. And that master plan is actively underway. The consultant team is working literally as we speak. And they will be working throughout the fall. And we actually expect to bring the master plan concept back to you in early next year. And just one quick note, we have talked quite a bit about in the past about this core area and the importance of connectivity between properties. The paseo that is in the very early stages of construction at the former Lupe's Restaurant site could be a unifying design element for this entire area south of the Boulevard. It's, it's basically, starts with a 30-foot wide easement to the Ventura County Watership Protection District because there's an underground flood control box culvert. At the Lupe's project, that has been expanded to 45 feet for a variety of reasons. But this next image just I use to emphasize the importance of looking at this downtown area in a holistic way. This is, this is the box culvert shown in, in light blue. And, and this is actually the Lupe's project that's under construction right now. So you can see that this, this easement runs all the way through the, through the core. And it's relevant because no building is, can generally be built on top of that easement. So this blue strip that you see here, west of Dallas Drive, could very well be turned into a public paseo slash, you know, pedestrian walking area with related improvements, et cetera. And you can see how it, now, it cuts right across the subject properties in red, the West Side Properties, all the way over to Dallas Drive. So by looking at this area in terms of both constraints and opportunities like this, I think we have some important elements that we can weave into the overall land use mix and design that will unify this area. And so, I, I mention it because I think it is important to look at this area comprehensively. So with that background, what staff is recommending tonight is an amendment to the lease to allow Sumato to remain on an interim basis at the current location with a 90-day notice requirement for any potential termination. And that does two things. It allows Sumato to continue fundraising and related operations as they have been doing. It also allows the city to evaluate all land use options for the West Side Properties going forward. And so, staff feels that this is a reasonable balance between the two goals. And with that, staff is recommending that council receive this report. Also, number two is direct staff to provide notice to Sumato that the ENA will expire on October 13th, as is currently the term. And then authorize the city manager to negotiate a short-term lease with Sumato with regard to remaining onsite on, on that short-term basis with, again, the same 90-day notification requirements. And that would take, take place through the First Amendment to the Sumato lease going forward. And with that, staff would be, I would be happy to answer any questions. And also, this evening to my left is Mr. Jeff Spector, Senior Planner in the Community Development Department and the Advanced Planner for the- Development Department and the Advanced Planner for the department as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Towne, all right. Any questions for Mr. Towne, staff? None, then we have one speaker, Marley. Yes. Thank you. Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is that all the speakers we had?
Pardon me?
Is that the only one speaker?
Yes, it was the only one. We also had Mr. Adam requesting to speak.
Right. So first, let me start out by saying, Mr. and Adam, and I, as part of the committee process, had the opportunity and pleasure to meet with Representative Sumato a few weeks ago. And they have a very ambitious and exciting proposal for a multi-phase art museum at this site. I believe that it was at least three phases, maybe four, if memory serves me correct. And if built out and it all came to fruition, it would be a fantastic component for arts in general, for our community. Additionally, while council is aware, I'm not necessarily the art guy on the council, I had an opportunity to actually attend one of the exhibits at the art museum, the former Taco Bell, and had a great time. It was just fantastic, got to meet the artists, and of course, a lot of the Sumato folks were there. So their mission is right on target. Their mission is absolutely right on target. Tonight, it's a land use decision, or really, a land use flexibility that I think council's looking at. All of us are aware of the tremendous amount of time and effort that we put into the downtown. This is really the next logical step in giving the council full flexibility. We have recently, as council aware, gone to a consultant. I think it would be extremely prudent to, in addition to the other things that we're looking at on the Boulevard, also include a museum component to the consultant to see if there's both financial viability and if that kind of meets with what we're trying to achieve on the Boulevard. It seems to just make sense. So, I'm going to move the staff recommendation, and I'm actually optimistic of Sumato, wherever they may end up, and that decision has not been made yet, an exciting and really great opportunity for the community to have our own art museum, because those folks are very passionate, and they do a really good job. So my motion would be, Madam Mayor, would be items one through three.
Thank you. Mr. Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, there is no question that this is an absolutely key piece of property on the Boulevard in our attempts to revitalize the downtown core of Thousand Oaks. It's a three-acre piece, and it's almost dead center, right in between Erbs and Canejo School Road. Mr. Fox mentioned that we're working with a consultant to come up with a downtown master plan, and I remember, after the extensive interview that we had with their folks, we asked him, "Is there any thought you'd like to leave us with?" And the very first thing they said is, "This piece of property is absolutely key and essential to your efforts to revitalize the downtown." As you saw in the presentation, it will connect both the east and the west-side pieces of property with whatever's put on there, which is very important, because, you know, our vision is that our citizens will be able to get out and walk in our downtown, all the way from PF Chang's all the way down to Erbs Road, and have something to do as they go along. And this piece of property is going to be a very essential part of that vision. And what tonight's vote will do, really, is just allow us to consider our options for the property and the best possible use. So I will certainly support the motion, and I'll be very interested to see where this all ends up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? None? All right, thank you. We'll call for a vote, then.
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 12 now deals with the compensation for our city manager, followed by compensation for our city attorney. Mr. Gary Rogers is our HR Director, as well as Acting Assistant City Manager, and he will make the presentation, while Mr. Powers and Ms. Tracy will step away. Noonan, I'm sorry, Ms. Noonan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You have two items under consideration tonight. Following the performance reviews of the city manager and city attorney on September 12th, tonight, the council is considering the compensation and First Amendment to the employment agreement with the city manager, and compensation and the Fourth Amendment to the employment agreement with the city attorney. The two changes for your consideration to the existing city manager contract or agreement are an increase in annual salary, effective July 1, 2017, from $230,772 to $244,618, and a cell phone stipend of $75 per month in lieu of a city-issued cellphone. The one change for your consideration to the existing city attorney agreement is an increase in annual salary, effective July 1, 2017, from $243,097 to $251,606. Council will need to consider these adjustments separately, and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Rogers? None. We do have two speakers. Nick Kidway, followed by Ann Marie.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, director of concerns, sitting in Thousand Oaks. First of all, a related item, which I've said many times, the structure of the management should be changed so that you don't have another deputy city manager or deputy HR manager making $200,000-plus. As a critic of the staff, I would like to correct the young lady that spoke that everybody seems to be making $10,000 a month. That is true, except that it's only for the dream team. If you look on the first page of the agenda, the directors and managers are on it. The space scales of all the employees are presented annually to the public, and I have them. And the people at the lower level, they are making pretty much what you get outside. Some, maybe a little more, some maybe a little less. And sure, with staying on the job a long time, you get raises, and you are out of the ballpark. One of the challenges that the council has, that you don't look at when you just do it piecemeal basis every year, is the compound interest factor. I don't know what to call it. If... That's what happened to Mr. Mitnick. He was hired at the low end of the scale, and then every year. And I don't know, I think, maybe I can get an answer, that maybe these raises are done twice a year. I know for sure it's once a year, and 3%, so next year it's raise on the 3%. And in the real world, you don't do that. And I'm glad that some people were upset earlier on. This needs to be told to the rest of the taxpayers also. The days of the free party are over, and there are no pots of money. And what this does is takes away from valuable services. I mean, I can understand or believe, even though we are big proponents of our library, as to the short hours that they have, the books that they don't have, et cetera. And this being much better than the neighboring library. So somehow, our priorities are wrong, and I would say this, people don't get into government service to get rich. And you are not going to be get rich but to make $200,000-plus gold-plated benefits. That's what is the problem, is that you might, in government, 10, 20 years ago, you came in with low salary, but you had gold-plated benefits, and that made up for it.
Ann Marie?
Again, my name is Ann Marie. Thank you for hearing us out. The mission statement, extraordinary service to the citizens we serve is our purpose. It doesn't sound like it. You can't see it? Is there a way to blow it up? And can you stop the clock?
Could the clerk or Mr. Rogers help Ms. Marie? Is there some way to expand that? I can see it, but I know you can make it a little...
I'm sorry I didn't come as prepared as...
No problem.
No, it was visible, definitely.
Not to them.
Oh, okay.
Apparently. Thank you for your help. I appreciate it. Again, extraordinary service to the citizens we serve is our purpose. I'm hearing that they still can't see it.
It's not on right now. We're waiting for TOTV to show to us if...
Okay. In the meantime, I'll go ahead and read this. Full-time benefits include 100 hours per year, holiday pay, vacation pay at 164 hours, 14 to 17 years, starting as early as three years, you get 100 hours, sick leave, 96 hours, every other one day of the week off, provision for dental, vision, life insurance, long-term disability, employee assistant plan, extra education, deferred compensation, a fitness center, more medical insurance, retirement benefits that are increasing. This does not sound like the taxpayer's money is our money. It sounds like it goes to city workers. It's absurd. I don't know any managers that make this kind of money. It's not equal to the public. I ask you, does the average hard-working taxpayer of Thousand Oaks have all these benefits? Is this really the solution to help the city of Thousand Oaks? The gentleman that was here tonight, I think his name, the Public Works Director, Andrew Powers? Excuse me, Jay Spurgis, his average income is $15,700 a month. A month! Three months of work? And I wouldn't even make that in a year. I've been working all my life. I'm 53 years old. I'm urging you, please, stop. Stop. Stop the nonsense. They don't need more. They don't need more. Take, use what we're giving you already. I don't know what more to say.
Thank you.
Please renew. May I have one more minute, please?
No, unfortunately not.
Okay.
We already stopped the clock for the other...
Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any additional speakers, but we certainly can discuss this issue amongst ourselves, council members, with the city attorney and the city manager absent. We have Jill Price, followed by Rob McCoy.
I'll be happy to weigh in here. You know, I don't know how many of you out there have ever taken a look at a large organization with an operating budget of $200 million. But the CEOs of those organizations make significant salaries, and they're, in many cases, much larger than any of our management staff people. In addition to that, there is an issue with retaining and attracting talent to cities throughout the country. And that kind of drives the... That drives the costs up. It does. I can't deny that it does. But there's some extenuating circumstances here that I think that folks aren't aware of, and I think it only... It bears mentioning. First of all, Mr. Powers, our new city manager, was formerly an assistant city manager here. And he came in at a very difficult time, when, last year, when many of you probably remember, we had to terminate our city manager. He stepped in and got a slight salary increase at that point to act as an interim city manager. But at the point in time when he was eligible for a salary increase, he elected not to ask for one. It is now, a year later, and he's up again for consideration of a salary increase. And we are in a much better place now than we were a year ago, folks. I'm here to tell you, on many fronts. So I think that rewarding him for the hard work that he has done is what anybody in that capacity would deserve. That's Mr. Powers. Now let's talk about our city attorney.
Oh, wait, she's the next assignment. She's the next agenda item, I should say.
Okay, sorry.
So just Mr. Powers.
So, I think those bear mentioning.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy.
As Councilmember Price said, over $200 million, in addition, $1 billion in assets. As the speaker noted, being 53 and not having a retirement, I too am 53. I have no retirement, I have no pension. And I also don't oversee a billion-dollar organization. So, from my vantage point, I have no problem with the quality of personnel we've received, and I stand behind it. So, thank you, though, for your thoughts and concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The salaries, much like the wastewater that the executives get, the council compares those to other like cities. And as Mr. Price pointed out, the market is what the market is. It's, while I can understand the level of frustration, given high salaries for high-level executives, it's consistent with virtually every other municipal city in the state of California. It's reality. If somebody would suggest that we were going to pay the city manager of Thousand Oaks $150,000 a year, which is by many a very good, very good salary, we would be very, very challenged to recruit the type of city manager who'd want to run the city. It's just the way it is. So, these are high salaries, but they're for high-level executives. That, as Mr. McCoy points out, they're responsible for a billion-dollar, over a billion-dollar operation, with, and in Ms. Noonan's case, with tremendous liability there. I'm not defending the salary, but I'm just telling you that it's well within the market. Mr. Powers, if you look at his salary compared to other city managers in Ventura County, he's well, well below, I believe he's seven or eight. And part of that's his tenure. Ms. Noonan has been with the city for a while, and hers is a little higher. But these are individuals. Somebody made mention of the hours of work. I think most of you recognize that executives of large corporations, public or private, they don't really have time off. I can tell you, from a public agency standpoint, these are 24 hours a day, seven days a week individuals. Unless they're out of the country, they're a phone call away. And they don't have days off, so to speak. They are always on, no matter what. So, the council does look at comparative cities. We try to stay competitive, and at the same time, we try to be realistic with what the market is with respect to these high-level executives, namely, the city manager or city attorney. So I'm certainly going to support the motion for these adjustments.
I don't think we have a motion yet. Mr. Adam?
Thank... Thank you, Mayor. A lot's been already said, that I guess maybe some of it bears repeating. These are very highly skilled, highly educated people, dedicated people. Their whole careers have been dedicated to the city of Thousand Oaks. And they do work 24/7. You mentioned the day off. They don't get a day off. They're all... They're on...
I called the office, they were out because it was the day off.
Well, they're available to us at all times. And believe me, I call the city manager Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, anytime. But that's, you know, that's just me. But they're very available to me. And they, they earn their salaries. I mean, there's, there's 500-odd employees in this city and there's a lot to oversee and a lot to do. And we don't hand out these raises blithely. We do compare the salaries to the 10 cities here in Ventura County, not to mention cities outside of Ventura County, Glendale, Pasadena. And our city manager doesn't make the most and he doesn't make the least. So he's, and we are careful that we keep the salaries competitive, but not, certainly not exorbitant. So I'm going to support the motion and, and as, as Councilmember Price mentioned, our city manager had the integrity to keep his pay rate at the acting city manager level, which was, and he kept it there for a year, which I thought was, was a very, a move of a lot of integrity on his part. Shows his dedication to the city, so I will support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. And I would like to weigh in as well. I worked in the private sector for 25 years. I certainly never received benefits that our two top-appointed officials or employees make and certainly had to work holidays, day and night, overnight shifts. I've done it all. And when I was elected to the council, I was appalled at the salaries. And I thought, why are we spending so much money? Over the years, I learned to understand why they're worth what they're worth. And Mr. Powers has proven his worth and beyond. He has taken the city from a very difficult position and situation and transformed it within. And for that, he is to be rewarded after he refused a salary increase. Certainly, it is a high salary, but it is well-deserved and they work extremely hard and he has worked extremely hard. And he is, as was already mentioned, in charge of hundreds of employees, billion-dollar infrastructure and assets, and a $200 million budget. You can't find anyone that will be able to do it as well as Mr. Powers does it for $150,000 or $200,000, not at all. Even at the salary he's receiving now with his increase, we're pretty lucky to have him. So I certainly will approve the, or support Mr. Fox's motion. All right, Madam Clerk, call for a vote.
The motion carries 5-0.
And the next agenda item is the salary adjustment and compensation for our city attorney, Tracy Noonan. Mr. Rogers?
Madam Mayor, as I mentioned previously, this is one item, one change in her existing contract for your consideration, an increase in her salary effective July 1 from $243,097 to $251,606.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we outlined the council's rationale for why we believe that these adjustments are appropriate. So I'll move the recommended salary adjustment for Ms. Noonan.
Mr. Price?
As I did with Mr. Powers, I just want to mention a few pivotal cases that, that were worked on by our city attorney's office at the direction of Ms. Noonan. And that would be the Ranch-Mobile Home case that, for years and years, toiled in the courts and could have had the potential of costing the city millions of dollars, potentially $100 million. We were, because of her leadership and persistence and, and legal knowledge, we were able to prevail, went all the way up to the Ninth Circuit Court, I believe. We prevailed in that case. The second would be the Castro case. It was a tragic event that occurred out here in Thousand Oaks Boulevard where a woman and a number of children were struck by a van that was driving through our town. That had the potential of being hundreds of millions of dollars in damages. But we were in the right. That case was, at one point, tossed, was not allowed to go forward, but it was appealed by the plaintiffs. And we once again had to fight that. And we spent a lot of money fighting both of those cases because we had to. The potential loss or judgments was so significant that we had to spend a lot of your money, taxpayer money, to defend ourselves. And it's because of Tracy and her, the staff that she has hired beneath her that, that we were able to prevail in those two pivotal cases. So I have no problem giving her what I feel is a reasonable raise, given the hard work that she's done for, for all of us. And remember, we live here too.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Any other comments? No?
I would like to say, basically repeat what I said about the city manager. The city attorney too has tremendous responsibility in defending the city in various lawsuits, multimillion-dollar lawsuits. And Tracy and her staff have guided the city through a labyrinth of legal cases, very challenging cases. And as a result, I feel that she is very deserving of the raise that we are giving her tonight.
All right, and with that, I will call for a vote.
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. I think Mr. Powers and Ms. Noonan can return. And our next agenda item is Nature Neighbors, a new public service announcement project. And this will be presented by our Legislative Affairs Analyst, Manager, actually, yes, Mina Leba.
Good evening, Madam Mayors, Councilmembers. The item you have before you is an opportunity for our city to provide some education through social media as well as the Thousand Oaks TV channel. The idea is a public service announcement project called Nature Neighbors. As you know, we are very blessed as a city to be surrounded by over 15,000 acres of natural open space. Within that open space, we have some wildlife and critters. Our local papers have announced in many occasions visits from our, our neighboring wildlife. This program is an opportunity for us to give residents tips and tools for how to deal with visiting wildlife. And there is an idea that has already been hatched through the National Park Service. They have a PowerPoint presentation called Neighbor, Nature Neighbors, and some of us as staff had the opportunity to actually hear that PowerPoint presentation. We reached out to them and asked if there would be an opportunity to do a partnership in producing this through public service announcements. As you recall, the city has had opportunities to weigh in on different projects throughout our region. One of them in 2014 was to support the wildlife corridor crossing at Liberty Canyon, which, by the way, will be having a public hearing on October 12 based on the first EIR proposed by Caltrans. And then in 2015, the city adopted a resolution that would stop using anticoagulant rodenticides and ask residents and businesses to do so. As part of the 2015 resolution, there was an added bonus of the city doing more education on this issue. So Nature Neighbors would include one segment on providing information on anticoagulant rodenticides and additional uses in refraining from its use. So today you have this item before you. This will cost no additional funding. Staff from National Park Service has gotten approval to volunteer time. We would like to have an opening by our mayor to introduce the project. And this project will be an evergreen project, so we can run this continuously, add this to our website and add it to TOTV's list of recorded items to feature. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Leba. It sounds like it will be a lot of fun and very informative, especially for the businesses regarding the anticoagulation policy that I'm really hoping more businesses near the open space will adopt. It irks me when I walk around malls and shopping areas that still show the, the poison. It shouldn't be. So I do hope that the message will reach businesses as to how important it is to use natural alternatives to get rid of rodents. All right. Okay, and with that, do we need a vote? Approve production? Okay. All right, then I'm looking for a motion. Let's see, Mr. Price?
Yes, I'll be happy to move item 12C and the recommendation to approve the production of Nature Neighbors and your starring role in it.
Thank you. All right, please vote.
The motion carries 5-0.
Excellent. And we do have now up next follow-up reports on meetings and conferences attended by Councilmember Price and Mina Leba. Mr. Price?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. As the chairperson of the National League of Cities Public Safety and Crime Prevention Committee, I traveled back to Washington, DC, September 6 through the 9th to attend our quarterly business meeting. There we got a briefing on the opioid epidemic that has been sweeping across this country and an update on the funding that had previously been approved. And I think it's important to note that all 50 states across this country are receiving some funds from that 21st Century Cures bill that was approved a couple of years ago. The Trump administration has, has declared it a national health emergency. There is still another $500 million that may or may not be appropriated and to be spent on, on programs that would aid in ridding our nation of that epidemic. I'm happy to report, though, and this comes directly from the Ventura County Star, that opioid deaths in the Cano Valley or Ventura County, excuse me, are down 23% in 2016. So we are certainly moving the needle and that's, that's a good thing. There are far too many folks, and in particular, young people, that are dying from opioid overdoses. And that, that would include not just the heroin, but more importantly, fentanyl and oxycontin and all of those synthetic opiates that are being over-prescribed, which is a large part of the problem that this 21st Century Cures money is going to, to address. Apart from that, we had a very interesting discussion about the events that took place in Charlottesville. Unbeknownst to me, at the time that I went back there, I, I was not aware, one of my co-chairs on that committee is a council member from Charlottesville, but was, what was unknown to me was that she was the council member who had suggested that the statue of Robert E. Lee be removed and therefore is the brunt of a lot of hate emails now and phone calls. But she was, as much as she could be, open with what transpired there. And it really promoted a discussion about, you know, what cities need to do, not just to prepare for something like that, because they were certainly unprepared. They put them, she admittedly put their city in the crosshairs just by that recommendation of hers. But not just what cities do to need, need to do to prepare, but what we as a people need to do to get better at treating each other fairly. So, and being able to air our differences without them resulting in, in this case, tragic deaths. We discussed the rise in hate crimes, which is kind of along those same lines. And there was a good deal of discussion about the alternatives to incarcerating drug addicts and the mentally ill. That's something that our committee, for the last five years that I've been a member, we have discussed year after year after year. And we encourage every administration to continue to, to fund mental health programs. And let's see, we also had a presentation from AT&amp;T in regards to the first net interoperability that, and this came about after 9/11 when first responders from different areas were not able to communicate with each other because they were on different frequencies. So this is a, this would be a nationwide broadband frequency that would be available to first responders of all kinds, not just police, fire and EMS, but the folks who are going to restore your electricity and, and who are going to make sure that you have fresh water to drink. So it's very important, very important discussion and good information there. So that was, that was really it for DC. In the following week, I went up to Sacramento and attended the League of California Cities, where I also sit on the Public Safety Committee. And there we considered two different resolutions. One with respect to emergency medical services in cities. There is a move afoot to take away a city's ability to manage that. And as elected members of your city, that's one thing we want to be able to retain, is the ability, we don't want somebody else telling us what's best for us. We, we want to handle that the way that, that our professionals tell us it's best handled. So we certainly passed that resolution. And then the second resolution that we took up was trying to fix some of the issues that have been caused by the erosion, what I view as the erosion of our criminal justice sentencing with Prop. 47, 57, and AB 109. It has created significant problems for law enforcement and, not just law enforcement, for all of us. Crime is on the increase and something needs to be done to take some of those crimes that were previously felonies where people went to jail for, for extended periods of time, and they were reduced to misdemeanors where now they spend a very short period of time in jail. We need to make sure that, that we can keep people who belong in jail in jail. And this was actually brought about by the city of Whittier, who lost one of their officers, Keith Boyer, in a shooting that was perpetrated by somebody who, quite frankly, should not have been released. So this resolution aims at trying to fix some of those problems and, and keep those who belong in jail in jail. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you very much. You've been very busy traveling to the nation's capital as well as the state's capital and coming back with vital information. I do like to see that homelessness and how to solve that problem was also mentioned because that's going to be a, a prime topic for the city of Thousand Oaks over the next few months.
Yeah, that is actually, the League of California Cities, that is one of their top priorities, is dealing with our homelessness issue, so thank you for bringing it up.
Thanks. All right, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on the 10th of October. And currently, we have special presentations scheduled from Five Star Theatricals. They'll be doing a performance preview for their Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat performance, which is upcoming. And we have one department report, which will be another pre-screen for a proposed project at 299 Thousand Oaks Boulevard. That's it.
Thank you very much. And with that, we don't have any closed sessions or public notices, so the meeting is adjourned until October 10th. Good evening.